Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting in the Wommet zoning board of appeals. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Boyer.
Here.
Ms. Norick.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Sermon.
Here.
Chairman Duffy.
Chairs present. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the village board of trustees as to whether the applications that come before us should be granted or denied. We will vote to grant, I'm sorry, we will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in section 5.4. F of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based upon whether the standards of review set forth in section 5.3. E of our village ordinance are met. The village board of trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at their next regularly scheduled meeting on May 28th. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The village board has the final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The village board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There's one small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the village board of trustees to approve that application, a super majority of five village board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. There's one other small peculiarity to our proceedings of which you should be aware. This board does not operate by majority vote. We operate instead by a tyranny of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on a given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, an application must receive four affirmative votes. Ordinarily, this board consists of seven members. Tonight, however, due to an absence, I'm sorry, a vacancy, there are six members present, or there will be six members present. Ms. Roberts, as Assistant Director of Community Development, sits with us tonight in advisory capacity only and is not a voting member of the board. Please be aware, therefore, that a vote of three to three will technically go into the record as a negative recommendation with the legal effect that I have previously described. In recognition of this unusual feature of our procedure, when we do not have all members of the board present on a given evening, we give the applicants who are scheduled to come before us that night the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. The next available date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is May 15th. There is no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a convenience, I'm sorry, a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there is no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth in the pre-printed agenda located on the table near the door where you first came in. When your case is called, please proceed to the podium and state your name and address and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from village staff these green booklets containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we will open the podium to others who wish to speak either for or against the application. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, though we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. After we have heard all oral presentations, I'll close the evidence and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceeding will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are here and planning to testify tonight, I would ask that you raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you are about to give? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you all. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the first case of the evening?
Our first case is 2019 Z-16, 300 Green Leaf Avenue. This is a request for a 43.54-foot front yard setback variation to permit the retention of playground equipment.
Hey there, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Mark Brubaker and I actually work for Mike Gallagher, who lives at 300 Green Leaf Avenue. Unfortunately, he is unable to be here tonight because he had, is unexpectedly delayed out of state. So the whole family is not in town currently, so I'm speaking for him. So as you stated, the major hardship would be, they have three children with special needs. Spina bifida is one of them, limb contractions is the other, and another one with sensory processing disorder. And we feel the playground is necessary for their therapy. The doctors have all recommended it and it just really helps them with, you know, quality of life.
I'm not trying to act like I don't have any sympathy, but that's not a hardship, to place the playset in the location that it's placed. So a hardship would be that there's no room within the conforming area to place the playground, so therefore we need the variance. It has nothing to do with who's using it.
Okay.
So you see the difference?
Yeah.
All right.
Well, also, I did, I took a few measurements. I know the front yard is now their backyard, so that's what causes the issue. So there is no other space on the property to put the playset. That's the only level ground that they have. I took some measurements from the sidewalk and it's 50 feet from the sidewalk to the two trees they have in their backyard. So without removing the trees, there would be no other option to have it setback that far.
I have a quick question for Lisa. The code says, am I right, that you can't have a playset in a side yard adjoining street?
Correct.
Now, what's the, what is the depth of the side yard?
For this property, it's 21 feet.
21 feet.
Depth from where?
For, width, I should say, width. So it's 21 feet from?
From Third.
From Third.
Correct.
So they could have it maybe, if I'm looking at the survey, which is 1-3.
Yep.
They could have it right, right where the word lot 1 is, probably about where the O is of lot. However, you can't have a playset within 10 feet of principal residence, right? A playhouse within 10 feet of principal residence. So am I correct in understanding that there's no conforming location for the playset on this lot?
I think it would be tight, yes.
Okay. All right. So then, so then begs the question is, is this the best location? No?
Right.
The house faces Third Street. The front yard is considered the yard that is fronting onto Green Leaf. So the only place that has room, if it's not in this back area by the garage, is considered the front yard and you're not allowed to place that anywhere in the front yard.
Anywhere.
Right.
So it doesn't matter where we move it or applicant moves it? It's not allowed?
Or it would be very tight.
Yeah, I imagine that there's a tree on the northeast corner of the lot by the, by the garage and by the, the car pad. And the size of the play equipment and, and it's well screened, I had to kind of push away the arborvitae to see what was going on there. It is an extensive play equipment that could not, I can't imagine how it could fit in, in the area designated as lot 1 on 1.3.
So are you familiar with when the equipment was installed relative to when the arborvitae and the fence were put up?
I am not, no. I know, I believe it was last July that the playset was installed, but I'm not sure about the fence and the trees.
So there's a photo in our packet that shows the arborvitae being, it looks like being installed, but it doesn't look like the fence is there? It seems that this was a project that was done altogether, you know, as, you know, one project, put the playset in, let's screen it. You know, my only impression of it was that, you know, as you come down the street, it's the only property that has arborvitae surrounding it and this was just installed. Now, I asked Lisa before the meeting, is there any, you know, restriction on planted vegetation in your front yard? I mean, you can only have a four-foot, 50% open fence, but you could install 20-foot arborvitae as a, all the way around your property and be within code?
So this was installed at the time the, the building was completed or afterwards and there was no permit sought for this? So you're coming here asking that, sort of for forgiveness because we didn't realize we needed a permit, is that the case?
That's correct.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for our applicant? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the case? Okay. Mr. Brubaker, was that it right?
Yes, sir.
Could you take a seat real quick while I ask this young lady to come up and make her comments?
My name is Kathy Leia and I live at 318 Green Leaf Avenue. We've lived in Wommet for over 33 years, it'll be 34 years this month. I don't know the Gallaghers well. They moved in and the first that we saw them was Halloween when they came by with their kids. And it's a very nice family as far as I can see. My husband and I are recently retired, so we saw a lot of the building that was going on at the time in terms of timing and, because Mr. Gallagher isn't here, I'll offer my two cents if that's okay. All the landscaping and the play equipment were installed pretty much in, back-to-back in the same week and the work was done very professionally and carefully. We didn't even know there was play equipment behind the fence and the arborvita for weeks. I don't think, having lived in Wommet all these years, I don't think anybody would ever buy that lot and think, oh gosh, I'll never be able to put a playset here for my kids. The house that had been there for years and years and years, probably, our house was from 1915, I'm guessing it was about the same time, was completely overgrown with bushes, had terrible maintenance and was really a blight on the street. So we were delighted to see the new home and the carefully managed lot. I think it is a hardship if you buy a lot and build a home in Wommet and you can't expect that your children can play outside safely, especially if you have special needs children. I'm a former teacher and I know how important it is for kids to be able to play outside. So even though that's not technically a hardship, it is a hardship if the zoning ordinance, which I'm sure was written for good, with good intentions, so people wouldn't put big equipment in their front yard, or trump benches in their front yard, there wouldn't be an eyesore in, in the yard. And I think that's probably the intent, I'm guessing, of the zoning ordinance. This is not an eyesore. It's in the side yard. They really don't have a front yard because of the way the, the house is sited on the corner. And for anybody to have bought this lot and done such a good job, we're delighted because there's a lot of traffic on Third Street and that house sat unpurchased and unattended for a couple of years before it was bought. So I know the intention of the zone, zoning ordinance is, is, is good, but nobody could really put any play equipment on this site. I mean, you're looking at this, this drawing here and I'm looking at it. You couldn't put anything anywhere and meet the setbacks that the ordinance requires. And I would say, we're all neighbors here in Wommet, why would we ever want one of our neighbors not to have play equipment possible for their children in their yard if, if that's something they can do for their kids, especially if they have special needs kids? And, and so I would recommend very strongly that the village approve this request for variance because I think it is something that is meaningful for us as neighbors and as, for you as board members and the rest of the village administration to approve something, even though the zoning ordinance itself doesn't allow for it, we have to be flexible when we know that there are needs like this and hardships in terms of where you would put this equipment and still be able to have a place for your children to play.
Can I, I just want to ask you a question. Since the play equipment was put in and the bushes were put up and stuff, would you say that it's an enhancement to the neighborhood? Or would you say it's, it's changed the character of the neighborhood?
Oh, I would say it's an enhancement for sure.
So rather than, like if the playset wasn't there and someone just left the yard open as opposed to having the arborvitae all the way around?
I think the combination, especially since you hardly, you can't really see, and you, you mentioned.
No, you can't see the playset, right?
You can't see the playset. You can hear the children laughing and playing sometimes, that's about it. It is an enhancement. The, the people who lived there previously, they were quite elderly and, and the yard had gone to pot. You couldn't see around the corners if you were driving. It was, it was really not in good shape at all. And they, they never trimmed the bushes. You, you couldn't see when you came through the alley if anybody was approaching on the sidewalk. And they have landscaped it beautifully so that you can see when there are pedestrians walking across the alley. So I think they've been very, very responsive, responsible about how they've landscaped and how they've enhanced the property. The house is beautiful. It's, it's in a neighborhood where we've seen a lot of change over 33 years. We've seen little teeny houses torn down and, and big, big, big monstrosities put up, some of them attractive, some of them not. This is one of the most attractive houses and lots within several blocks. And so the arborvita, the, the other landscaping, the company that did the landscaping is very well-known in, in town here and they did a beautiful job and they maintain it with, with that same company. So I would say it's definitely an enhancement, not just to our limited area in, on Green Leaf, but to the whole village.
All right. Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you very much. All right, do we have any, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the case? Are, are there any other questions for our applicant? No? All right, I'm going to close the case and I'm going to ask if there's a board member who'd like to make a motion. Mr. Boyer.
Regards to case number 2019 Z-16, I move to recommend granting a request for a 43.54 foot front yard setback variation to permit the retention of playground equipment at 300 Green Leaf Avenue in accordance with the plan submitted.
Hold on a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Mr. Boyer, your motion.
So there's a, a lot of thoughts. It, it seems pretty straightforward. Regards to the zoning request, there is, there is no, at least we figured, there's most likely no conforming location for a playset. That, I think there was a hardship, I think all the standards are met. They, they have to use their front yard as a rear yard because of where the house was sited, where it was built. After I went through the survey and looked at what the, what the average front yard setback was for the block, I, I kind of understood why the builder put the, the house where he decided to place it. He only, he pushed it back 17 feet from the required front yard setback and that, that gave that house the largest possible front yard. If he used the front yard average setback, he would have lost that 17 feet, he would have had a smaller front yard and still a not usable backyard. So it made sense to push it back as far as he possibly could. That left an area of 4,900 square feet for a front yard. That's a really large front yard. And for the applicant not to be able to use 4,900 square feet is, is a hardship. Unfortunately, the way this house is sited, they have to use their front yard as a backyard. The 4,900 square feet, by the way, if you had a 40, 40-foot front yard, it'd be 40x122 lot, which I know we have 40x2122 lots in Wommet where they have a house and a garage. And this is, you know, open space. So again, I totally believe that the standards are met on this. As an aside, one thing I was, and I don't know if anybody else saw this too, but we have a 12,000 square foot lot, 70x184, and there's no place to put a, a playset.
But that's because he sited the house far enough back.
Well, there's, that's part of it, right? But this doesn't have to do with the hardship. This is just a comment, just on looking at this. I, I kept on looking and scratching my head. I can't believe there's no conforming place to put a lot or put a playset. This is one of the biggest lots in Wommet, really, in these Wommet. There's bigger ones, but this is one of the biggest. So what it boils down to is, this house is massive and this is just a comment on, on our zoning codes in general and what's allowed to be built. The house that was there before, built in 1914 before zoning codes were even created in, in the U.S., you know, it was 2,000 square feet and it, according to the original survey, it, it left a huge amount of green space. And so you had this, this house, original, smaller, it's non-functional, I know it was in disrepair and probably needed to be torn down, there's really not much you could do with it, but it was replaced with a massive house and now you, you cause the new owner issues of how they can use this, use their lot because the house is so big, even though they can build, it's like, you know.
But I guess if, just for discussion, I know we haven't had the second offered up yet, but as you pointed out, he built the house 17 feet further back, which took up 17 feet of backyard, right?
Right.
All right. So I just, so they created the problem by siting the house the way they sited it.
Well, not the applicant, not the applicant.
No, 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 no.
It's not self-created.
No.
But 17 feet still isn't, doesn't do much and that's my point. 17 feet.
17 feet gives them enough room to put a playset in the backyard.
Conforming?
It's, she says it just, it would just barely fit. Now, it, it, I'm sorry, I'm just discussing.
No, I understand that, but also you have to look at the average, the, the averaging of the, the front yards. So a lot of these houses are setback a little bit farther than the regular houses. And so you have this 52-foot front yard setback that's because of the averaging.
Yeah.
It was a little bit farther back than normal. And so it does create an issue where you're going to actually put the address in the front door when you, when you cite this house.
All right, let's get the second in and then let's get the special.
Just simply, the applicant did not cite the house.
Right.
Where it is. And so he, they, they inherited the building's location, the setbacks, and they were not able to provide this play equipment for their children in any other location than in the front yard. And it seems to me, and they've done a good job in screening it from the street, as I said, you know, it's hard, you really have to try very hard to go and see where it is with the arborvitae fence. And so I don't, I think the hardship is where the house was sited to begin with and they have no other choice but to do it where they did it, so I can approve it.
So, you know, I just, I'm going to throw this out there, just, I got to get it off my chest. To keep saying that they had no other place to put it, I think is incorrect. That is, a large front yard is 4,900 square feet. It didn't have to be right up against the sidewalk or within feet of the sidewalk.
That is, that is true, but it still would have required a variance.
It still would have required a variance.
That's factually accurate.
But, but we asked for people if, so they're coming, we have to look at this as if it was not built because this is a request for something that was already done. And if we, we often ask people to reduce their request, right? And in this instance, would we ask them to move it further back from the sidewalk?
I think we would have asked them to put it in the 17 feet that they, the house was setback, you know, maybe next to the patio.
Get it closer to the house.
Well, it's also, it's also a big playset. I mean, maybe.
I don't.
It could be downsized and still function the way they needed it to.
Regardless of the, would, we would have to give a variance putting it in anywhere in the front yard, but would we ask them to reduce their request by moving it from the sidewalk?
In, for this case, I don't think that I would because there is no backyard. This, this is a unique, now, now it's a unique property. You know, it's, again, it's a massive, massive lot and now there's no backyard.
But if you look at sheet 1.4, you can see the patio and it could have easily fit in that corner closer to patio. I mean, if they would have come to us at first, that's where I would have probably suggested it be closer to the house and not right at the corner. If they had come, I'm just saying if they had come to us.
Because keeping in mind that in cases where people come to ask for something that's already been done, we've been instructed by corporate counsel to look at this as if it hasn't, the work hasn't been done, what would our be, what would be our recommendation of the village board? Right? So, I mean, I, I, that, that's the one thing I'm stumbling on right now, is would we have asked them to reduce their request by moving it further from the sidewalk?
I didn't realize that in intersection that you could have bushes right to your lot line as tall as you want. I see plenty of homes where they've kept hedges at like four foot for safety.
There's a provision in the village code for a sightline, sight obstruction. The engineering department can require no higher than three and a half feet for fencing or landscaping based on the type of intersection it is and geometry setbacks and things like that. To my knowledge, that has not been raised as an issue here, so I'm assuming it's okay.
All right, the only issue that this creates is if two bicyclists, bicyclists are coming down the sidewalks and they can't see each other because the bushes are so high. It doesn't cause a, a traffic issue with cars. All right, any more questions or comments we want to make on this before we go to a vote?
You know, it, this is really a tough one. It's, because I think if they did come in front of us, we would have asked them to put it somewhere else. At the same time, I didn't even see it the first time I drove by, I went all the way down the block and said, where?
Yeah, which house is it? Which, which corner?
So it's not like it, it's an eyesore or anything like that. You know, it is large, you know, if it would have been smaller in scope, maybe it could have gone over to this lot one area, I don't know.
So the people that, I just want to clarify, the people that currently own the house, the Gallaghers, did not have it built for them? It was a spec house and they bought it? Or did they have it?
As far as, as far as I know.
That is correct, right? Yeah, that is correct. It was a spec house and the Gallaghers bought it.
Okay.
Yeah, so they, they didn't create the hardship that we're having to deal with right now? Could they have put a smaller playset in the, what's the allowable backyard, possibly? You know?
I think, given their requests for the, the special needs, I think it's fine to have whatever size they need, but it could have been placed closer to the house in that additional 17-foot feet that it was setback.
Right.
That the house was setback.
All right, any other comments before we go to a vote? No? All right, why don't we take a vote, Lisa?
Mr. Boyer.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Mr. Cullings. Ms. Norick.
Yes.
Mr. Sermon.
No.
Chairman Duffy.
Chair votes no as well. So that's going to go as a negative recommendation of the village board. The meeting's going to be here on, I forgot the date, at 28th. I suggest the Gallaghers come and repre, they're going to have the opportunity to represent their case. Village board can overturn our decision with a super majority, which is five of the seven members. And if you'd like to come as well, I would say, because they'll ask for comments, but everything that's been talked about is on the record and they will all get a packet with our comments before their, before their meeting on the 28th through view. All right? Could I ask you, Mr. Brubaker, could you come up and sign one of these letters for me? It's an acknowledgement of your presence and, and the dates that are coming and take the other one with you.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2019 Z-16.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time. Alright, when you're ready, Lisa.
Our next case is 2019Z15, 915 Yale Avenue. This is a request for a 0.49-foot front yard setback variation to permit the retention of a new home.
Hi, welcome.
Welcome and good evening. My name is Gene Greiner. I've been the president of the Village of Wilmatt since 2005, and I'm here today to ask.
So you, where do you live?
I live on 1110 Lake.
1110 Lake, alright.
Yeah, and I'm building a new construction, or I've been building a new construction, single-family house at 915 Yale.
Yeah.
And I'm asking, or I'm here today to discuss my request for a variation of a little under six inches of front setback. And the issue arose that either the stakeout was not done correctly, was six inches closer to the front, and/or the contractors who did the footings and the basement walls, they didn't do exactly, I think, the way it was staked out. So at the end of the day, it was a, it was an honest mistake, it was not intentional to create the six-inch or 0.5, 0.49-foot front setback variance.
So, you know, I, I'm just gonna ask you.
Yes.
A quick question here. I walked around Lata, okay, it's rained last couple days, and there's a, you know, a funnel, a lake in the backyard.
Yes.
This wasn't an intent to move it forward to, to get it out of the water?
No. No, plus, I mean, the six inches wouldn't do it.
Yeah, so then my next question was, I looked at the garage, and is the garage any wider than the plans?
No.
So the garage hasn't increased in size?
No.
And is, is the six inches run the length of the garage, or is it, is it part of the garage?
It's only at one point of the garage. It's six inches too close to the street, I think.
You know how, how many feet we're talking?
It's like five inches.
Twenty, 26 feet versus 25 and a half.
What I'm, what I'm talking about, you, you were saying that the lot is skewed, it's not square.
Correct.
And so that was part of the issue.
Yes.
So what I'm, what I'm curious about is, and I couldn't see it on here, the point, 1.6, the, the survey, is the entire front portion of the garage, the, the foundation, is it over the building line, or since it's skewed a little bit?
It's skewed a little. At one point, it's 0.49 foot. At another point, I think it's a little less. And the reason is because the lot is not in a perfect 90-degree angle.
Right.
So I think the mistake probably happened with the stakeout, that the stakeout had assumed it was, it was a square lot, but it didn't.
Appears to be almost square, though, 67, 66.7 wide, and then each length, it's only off by .1.
No, yeah, 1-1. Point, .11.
.11, yeah. Which is an inch, so it's not really, I guess, another standard's rectangular lot.
Yeah.
I, I agree. I think, at the end of the day, I think it was, it was a mistake. Unfortunately, the mistake was not discovered when it should have been discovered with a spot survey, when the foundation and the footings were poured. Unfortunately, it was only discovered after the house was built.
So you make a statement in your letter to us that says that there are a total of seven houses on the block, and four of them are closer to the street.
Correct.
Than this one. So I, I made sure I stood at the front corner of the garage and I looked, and looking to the south, the house that's on Lake is absolutely closer to Yale, but I only felt like one other house was closer, and then, and that would be that 923. And then.
It wasn't. There actually was a, was a discussion together with the building department.
Yeah.
And Rachel had determined, actually, that four houses are closer.
From some survey that they've got.
Four out of seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it must be the ones further down the block.
Yes, yeah.
And Lisa, maybe you can answer this, or maybe the applicant can answer this. The house didn't get six inches wider, didn't get six inches bigger.
No, no.
It just was six inches closer.
Correct, yeah. And the house does not have any other violations, so in terms of floor area ratio and so on. So floor area ratio, lot coverage, the side setbacks, the backyard setback, the height restriction, top of first floor, foundation, and so on, that's all compliant.
So technically, there's, there's six more inches of green space in the backyard than there would have been.
Yes, yes. And that's missing in the front yard.
Alright.
I'll ask another lady question. Where do the downspouts, where does that water go?
The downspouts go into a pop-up that's coming up in the front yard.
Help me, what does the pop-up do?
The pop-up, so the water that's going through the downspouts.
Yes.
Is underground, is routed into, into a pop-up, and, which is as required by the village.
And so the water eventually goes where?
Goes into the front yard.
Front yard and then into the street drain?
If it, if it's not being absorbed by the, by the grass in the front yard, which I think with the heavy rain that we've had in the last few days, the soil is saturated, yes.
Yeah, no, I noticed that the, that the water was flowing to the street drain today. Okay, thank you.
So are you a builder, or?
Yes.
So are you the GC on this?
Yes.
So, and you build other houses in the village?
Yes.
So you knew that you were supposed to get a spot survey?
I, I knew. I forgot to do it. I think, I mean, the building department also didn't continue doing all the other inspections. And there's, building a new house requires about 60 inspections, so all of those inspections were done, and at the end, we, both of us, I think the building department and myself, we found out that, oh, we forgot to do the spot survey.
Are the subcontractors you use typically ones you use? Because I, I live nearby, and I just realized that house took.
Took three years.
Yeah, people, people that live nearby thought it would never be done. I mean, it was like there was a different truck all the time, you know, for a week there'd be work, and there wasn't any work for a couple weeks. So could it be the quality of the subcontractors you had that?
Could be, yeah.
And then, Lisa, maybe you can answer this. The rough plumbing and rough electrical, those passed?
Yeah, all the rough inspections were passed at the time.
All rough inspections passed? Okay.
And the grading passed?
Grading is in process. It was approved for a pre-s, a pre-sod inspection, which I understand is a visual inspection, not a survey.
Grading, just when I saw it, it didn't seem as careful as you would imagine that it would be. It was more like just a guy and a bobcat just kind of going around and making it line up at the house and at plot line, and, you know, I don't know how that changed, but... I guess I'm, I'm concerned, just because it took so many years to build, what, what else, what other issues there could be, but...
An as-built survey will be required, and I think there's some corrections that'll need to be made before that's probably done.
So what if the survey is, survey is off at the lot lines?
As far as the grading goes, my understanding is that it needs, it'll be, need to be corrected or otherwise compensated for in a revised plan, if that's possible.
Alright, do we have any other questions for our applicant right now?
How many homes have you built in Wilmatt?
About four, five.
Okay. Have you ever had any other zoning-related issues on any of them?
No, this is, this is my first time in front of the zoning board. Welcome.
Yeah.
Pleasure.
Alright, any other questions for our applicant? No? Alright, is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak your for, either for or against this case? Alright. Mr. Greiner, can you have a seat? Were you sworn in at the beginning? Did you raise your hand?
No, I thought I was.
Okay, so I'm gonna have to swear you in real quick. Let me find my cheat sheet. Do you swear, oh, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell, that you'll tell the truth in, in the testimony that you're about to give? If so, please say I do.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Please come on up. Welcome to our meeting.
Hi, I haven't been to one in years.
I need your name and your address.
Sure, who's taking the minutes? It's Frederick Braskamp, B-R-A-S-K-A-M-P, 900 Oxford Lane. So that would be at the end, the west end of the alley from the property. So we're here to talk.
So you are right behind, to the west of the applicant?
No, I'm not directly behind, I'm on the corner.
He's on the corner of Lake and Oxford.
Lake and Oxford.
Yeah.
Lake and Oxford.
Yeah. The letter that was with the packet is from the gentleman who lives right behind.
That would be like 914-ish.
912, I think.
12, okay.
So the question was answered about how do you miss the spot inspection? Apparently, everybody missed it. My question is, does the basement, is it also under the garage?
No.
Okay. And are we addressing flooding here tonight or not?
Our purview is about how the house, house is cited in the front yard setback.
Okay, okay, because the flooding is an issue, a huge issue. But if this is not the time and place for it, that's fine.
I mean, you can voice your opinion on it, which you've started to, but it's nothing that we can really address.
That you can do anything about, okay.
Because, yeah, we're, we're here about the front yard setback issue.
Okay, then I just wanted to make that known.
Yeah, I was there this morning, there was a river running out of the alley into the street that then ran over to the street.
And understand, of course, we've had a lot of rain.
Yep.
But I've lived there 30 years. We've had lots of rain before. This is not the first time we've had day after day. And the way this water spreads and doesn't go away has never been seen by anybody on the block before.
So this is something that you're saying has occurred since the house began, the construction on this house began?
Correct.
Not just today?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
This is not new. And as far as any grading that was done, all we saw was people putting sod down. There was no additional grading or anything. And I have to say that the alley, the unopened alley.
Yeah.
Has been, you know, pushed down with the equipment and everything in construction that has not been brought back up to where it had been.
So I had a question, just, the, the original conditions of that unopened alley, what, what was there? Was it gravel? Was it?
No, it was, it was grass. It was what you see.
It was grass and weeds, yeah. I'd walked it.
Grass, and they actually had like a, like some, a little hedge that went between the, the house.
Oh, you mean on that particular property?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Didn't it have, didn't it have?
Because that's the only section.
Not a hedge, but bushes that were kind of running.
There, there was an area next, you know, at the side of the house, that they had built up with flagstone, and their garbage cans were there.
And that was the, that's still the only section that wasn't paved of that whole alley there, right? There's, everything else is paved except for that section from the rear of.
Oxford to Yale.
Yeah. Was it all the way Oxford to Yale?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought it was just next to the.
There's a foot, there's a footpath that starts at the.
On Oxford side, yeah.
Right.
From Hunter.
Many years ago.
It was like dirt, it was like a worn-out footpath, it looked like people were walking through there.
Many years ago, 10, 15 years ago, the village released all the unopened alleys in the village. I think there were about 15 of them. They just, they, I don't, I don't know what the term is, but the property went back to the property owners on either side.
But not in this case?
No, because two, two residents further east bitterly complained that public property should not be given to private property owners.
I was, I was on the plan commission when all those alleys.
Okay, so it was like 10, 15 years ago.
Right.
Yeah.
And the reason for this particular, for not releasing the right-of-way to the adjacent property owners, which we had done in a lot of other places.
Right.
Was, there was a request, because Harper School is near Hunter Road there, and that Lake Street, the sidewalk, it was not a very comfortable place for children to go to school. So there was a request that that alley stay as a pedestrian pathway.
Right, and I remember the family that requested that. And Harper School's response was, we never recommend that children walk through alleys to get to school. So, anyway, that's the story of that alley, and honestly, it probably should not be opened because it would create a terrible parallel, right, you know, thoroughfare to Lake Avenue. Anyway, that's the story of that. So my question is just, you know, what about the flooding? You know, is that gonna be returned to where it was so that every time it rains, we don't have the ducks back there? We love the ducks, but it shouldn't happen every time it rains.
So there's, so the alley is, but there's still flooding between those two backyards that's not related to the alley.
No, 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 no. That flooding between the two backyards rarely, rarely occurred, and it was always on the Yale side. It was never on the Oxford side.
Okay.
You know, I'm in, I lived at 915 Amherst, the same location, one, you know, one block over, and they built a home in between this property and where I was at. It's a contemporary home.
Yeah, right on the, or on the corner of the alley, yeah.
Yeah, as soon as they built that, the same thing happened to my backyard.
Yeah.
It never flooded, never did anything. Part of it, I think, is that you're just taking the, the homes, the footprints of the homes are larger and there's less land, and it's just pushing it out, so.
But it's also, you know, if you, it's, it's sinking something deeper into the water table. It's like pushing a, a glass down into, you know, a pot, the water level's gonna rise, you know, that's the basement going down into the water table.
Because this basement is far deeper than the one that was there previously.
Just pushes water out.
I know the, the water table in that area is about six foot six.
It's not very deep.
So if you go below that, you constantly have to have some pumps that then are ejecting the water.
Yeah.
To have a basement lower than that.
Yeah.
The water table ranges all over. You can go parts of Anettego where the water table is 45 feet down. So it just depends where you're at.
Yep.
But like you said, it's like submerging a day's worth of water.
Lisa, the final grading plan is still to be.
Right, it has not been, what has been done has not been finally approved, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any more questions for our applicant? Alright, seeing none, as soon as Lisa comes back, then we'll take a vote. Or we'll, I'll ask for someone to make a motion. And who would like to do that? Okay, so Lisa doesn't have to be for this, here for this. Mr. Sermon, would you like to make the motion?
Sure. I move to recommend granting a request for a .49-foot front yard setback variation to permit the retention of the new home at 915 Yale Avenue in accordance with the plans submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Boyer, second. Okay, Mr. Sermon, your motion.
I think this was just a site error from a subcontractor that created it, and coincidentally, the city didn't do a spot check and catch it. I don't know what they would have done if they would have caught it, but the garage, I believe, is just slab on grade, so, I mean, they could have said.
Trim it back.
Trim it back, or, you know, that would affect the footing and everything else, but they could have, I don't know what the city would do. But I think it's so minimal, the house did not get any larger by doing it, is our understanding. So it just shifted, you know, six inches closer to the street.
And, Mr. Boyer, your, your second?
It's really not affecting anybody. You know, there's technically six more inches of green space in, in the rear yard now, and there's really no gain and no benefit to the builder to adjust this house six feet, or six inches closer. So I concur, it was a mistake. And we did receive a letter from one of the neighbors.
Yes.
I, I wrote it a number of times, wrote, took some notes, and unfortunately, you know, most of the concerns that were brought up aren't zoning issues that we can't address with the, with the, with the neighbor. The project's been going on for four years, not a zoning issue.
Flooding.
Called the builder, you know, there were some issues with how the builder was building, you know, some words that, you know, I would say that Wilmet residents probably shouldn't use for other Wilmet residents. Again, not a zoning issue, we can't vote on that. Grading issue, and then in the postscript about cutting a tree down, again, not a zoning issue, questioning the private property rights to landscape as they desire. So, as much as we, we take into account neighbors' concerns, there's really nothing here we can hold our hat on, so.
Very well put, thank you for addressing that. Any other comments from the board? Ms. Nork, anything?
So, minor, minor adjustment, unfortunate error, but I agree with your comments that there was no real benefit. It was just an honest mistake.
Anybody else? Mr. Cullings, Mr. Schneider, no? All right. Yeah, I concur, just, uh, sounds like it was an honest error, or honest error, I guess is right. And no benefit to anybody. So, why don't we take a vote?
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Mr. Cullings?
Yes.
Ms. Nork?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair votes yes as well. So, that's going to go as a positive recommendation of the village board. Meeting's on the twenty-eighth in this room. I suggest you come. It probably will be on the consent agenda, which happens at the very beginning of the meeting. And they just vote yes on everything, or a whole bunch of items with one vote of yes. Could I have you come up here and just sign one of these papers for us, take the other one with you? Thank you very much.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number two zero one-nine dash C dash fifteen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Boyer, second. Thank you very much, all in favor?
Aye.
Our next item on the agenda is?
Move to approve the meeting minutes of the zoning board of appeals for Wednesday, April third, two thousand and nineteen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Microphone's now open for public comment. Nobody's running up to make a comment, so we move to the next item, which is the adjournment of the meeting.